It's a little thing there, okay, awesome. Well, it is five o'clock. Welcome to the city council meeting here. I'd like to call it to order. Um, which you will first start by doing the pledge of allegiance, so if you'd all stand and join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Aaron, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Sherman.
Here.
Councilmember pointer.
Here.
Councilmember Sherwin.
Here.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Here.
Councilmember Bradley.
Here. All right, we're all here. First thing we item of business tonight is approval of the agenda. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve the agenda.
One second. Okay, and before we move forward, were there any changes that I should have asked about first? No, nothing, okay. With that said, Bill?
Yes.
And Linda?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Tanya?
Yes.
And Mary Ann?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, next to the public input, please state your name and address for the record before proceeding with your comments. Individual remarks are limited to five minutes with the overall public input period limited to thirty minutes. Under Iowa Open Meeting Law, the city council can take no formal action on comments given during the public input period which do not relate to action items on the agenda. Is there anybody who would like to speak to the council?
I'd like to.
Sure.
If you can come up to the center here.
So you can be seen.
So you can see by the cameras here.
Kurt Minor, seven oh two East Howard Street.
Hi Kurt.
Came here tonight for two reasons. Number one, the airport expansion info. A little more about it, maybe you saw my letter in last week's Manchester Press. Second reason, one of the last times I wrote a letter to the Manchester Press, former mayor Milk Kramer apparently rebuked me at the following council meeting, saying I was spreading misinformation, so I'm here if anyone wants to rebuke me again or discuss the issues with me. I've heard nothing but positive comments about my letter in last week's paper. I'm sure most of you have seen some of what's going on over at Dyersville, sixteen miles away. Hard to miss it. Dyersville is or was a little smaller in population than Manchester, probably still is. They don't appear to be dying, although someone commented that Manchester is gonna die if we don't expand our airport. I don't know who convinced you that our airport is the key to keeping Manchester going. And I don't know if any of you have seen Dyersville's airport, so I have a photo of their airport. All it is is a grassy strip. No asphalt. It's privately owned. And once again, I disagree with spending our tax dollars on expanding an airport that I don't believe is gonna do a whole lot for us. That's all I've got.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Anybody else? Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and close public input and we'll move on to the consent agenda. Uh, the first item on the consent agenda is we need an approval of the minutes of the January twenty-third city council meeting, the January twenty-eighth legislative work session, the January thirtieth budget work session, and the February sixth budget work session. Need a motion to approve resolution seven approving the bills. We need a motion to acknowledge the receipt of the city reports. And we have from Manchester PD, the wastewater treatment, aquatic center wastewater treatment, and a building report from Tim Heims. Next, we need a motion to approve liquor licenses for Saint Mary's Church and Dollar General. A motion to approve resolution eight amending salaries for Alex Hofer and Jared Coyle. They both completed one year in their positions. Need a motion to approve the payment of claims totaling seven hundred sixty-nine dollars and twenty-five cents to program for engineering services. Believe that's for the twenty twenty-four street improvement and East Main Street. Resolution nine approving property tax abatement applications submitted by property owners and recognized urban revitalization revitalization areas and authorizing the transmittal of the approved applications to the Delaware County Assessor. And I believe you have a list of those in your board docs. We need a motion to set March thirteenth, twenty twenty-three at five PM as the date and time for a public hearing on the proposed contract documents for the library parking lot improvement project. Need a motion to approve resolution ten approving the preliminary and final plat for beerist first edition. Do you wanna tell us what that is for sure?
Mike Lockey's acquired some land north of town. There's like four or five parcels there and he's re-dividing them up. And so this really is just a preliminary final plat of a subdivision because of the different parcels they're creating in the layout. It's on the fringe of our two-mile X territorial zoning jurisdiction.
Okay. Thank you. Next, we need a motion to set February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three at five PM as the date and time for a public hearing on the proposed maximum property tax levy from certain levies. Do you wanna speak to that as well?
Oh, that they're not here.
Yeah, that's, yeah. Part of the newer legislation by the state. We were gonna hold back on that, but the state is still deciding what they're gonna do, so um, because we it's based on a dollar amount that we can't exceed, and it's a not to exceed, we can reduce it. I felt just in case thing, the timeline wasn't lengthened like they are saying it was, that we were better to probably just go ahead and publish. Again, it's a maximum levy, so we can always reduce. Um, um, so I didn't, I didn't gross things up too much, but I gave us a little bit of a cushion in there just in case with the legislation changes, we needed to do some adjusting, but um, so the maximum levy is the first step. We'll have the public hearing on that. We'll pass a resolution on that, then we'll set the public hearing on the actual budget, and then hold a public hearing on the actual budget, so this is just kind of a preliminary step to the, to the actual budget.
And just so the public knows, this is not unique to Manchester. This is happening to every city in the state of Iowa right now. Okay, and we also need a motion for resolution eleven. Did I skip something there? No, resolution eleven approving the agreement between the city of Manchester and the chauffeurs, teamsters, helpers, local unions, two thirty-eight affiliation with the International Brotherhood of Teamsters covering the police bargaining unit. Are there any other questions on the consent agenda, or do I have an approval?
Question.
Or motion? Yes.
Okay, under the liquor license applications, if there is an error on a liquor license, should we correct that, or do they need to correct that?
Which license has the error?
It's the one for the Saint Mary's. According to this, the ownership is a hundred percent Ashley Jasper. And I kinda doubt that she owns a hundred percent of Saint Mary's.
They, they have it, it's, it's funny how the Iowa alcoholic beverages has it set up, so well, it says she's the owner and she's actually, they, they make her, she's the gala.
Responsible for?
Gala coordinator, so.
I just didn't want something to go through our offices that was incorrect.
Yeah. It, the system isn't super flexible with different things like that, so it does appear that she, it says she's the owner, but it's just gala coordinator for that event.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question. My daughter and son-in-law own a property on this tax abatement list. I'd be glad to abstain from voting on this in order to leave it on that.
It's just, I don't think it's terribly important, but why not? You always wanna avoid the appearance.
So why don't we just pull that agenda off the consent agenda and vote on that separately?
Okay, so do we need a motion to remove that from the consent agenda?
I don't think so. I think the council can just agree.
Okay.
You just amended the agenda. You're taking it out of the consent agenda.
Maybe it's a regular. I could just, I could just abstain from the vote on this.
Yeah.
That might be easier.
You just, well, you wanna abstain for everything, though?
Well. You don't need to have a hundred percent to approve the consent agenda.
I think I'd feel more comfortable if we just went ahead and we did an amendment to, um.
If you wanna just amend the agenda.
Amend the agenda.
Uh, item number three point seven. Three point seven is mature.
Oh, we do a motion removing item three point seven to be considered on its own.
Go move. All right.
One second.
All right. We'll just take a vote. Tanya?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Dean? You can vote to take amend the agenda.
Yes.
Okay.
You can't be prepared.
I know, okay. All right. So now, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda that we currently have it now? Are there further questions? You wanna do the motions, okay. Thank you, Linda. Anybody else have a second?
One second.
Okay. All right, Linda?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Tanya?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
All right. Now, we will do, that was the resolution for the, is that number four?
Resolution nine.
Nine, there it is. I need a motion to approve the property tax abatements, resolution nine. Do I hear a motion? A second. Okay. Any further discussion? All right, Linda?
Yes.
Tanya?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
And Dean abstained. Okay. Onto our regular agenda items. Oh, we have public hearings. All right, right now it is five eleven and we will have a public hearing on the request of Joe Dietrich to rezonate five oh eight East Delaware Street R one sixty, which is a single-family low-density district, to C two, a community commercial district. Somebody wanted to speak to that.
So we showed up last week. Jason Chapman, five oh five East Main Street, Manchester. We live in a house that's right, we don't probably surround it that particularly.
Like in front of it, aren't you?
We, we're at that was a planning zoning meetings I was called at this last week. And we're just expressing our concern with the changing of the dynamics of the neighborhood, the feel. I know one thing that I can make, cuz I used to know Carol and Bob Brockmire for years when they were in that place, her son Kurt, when he was new. But deal is, you know, I've had that property since ninety-nine. And married, divorced, remarried, raised seven kids in that house. Uh, there is not a single person in that block that is in there in that time. You know, they've all passed or moved or gone. I do remember Bob share with me that when those storage units, and I didn't bring my sheet, but you'll see that it's the exact same zoning as those apartment complex. When that got approved, those, those what do you call them, the mini, mini storage units? There was some type of deal in the mid, in the works back then where those were supposed to only be rented to the apartment complex. And the reason I bring that up is you can see that the zoning, they're the exact same color, and it's kinda weird because here's the apartments and here's just that one parcel of land. My fear is exactly what happened in that scenario. It's good old boys, it's handshakes, it's hey, we're only gonna use it for this purpose, but that's not what it is now. So now in my backyard, we have fourteen individual tenants. You know, they're, they're in there for those fourteen units. Dietrich was proposing that the empty lot beside it that he just acquired from Ogden, um, he wanted to do the same thing in that lot too. Uh, but I believe he had to get C two, is that what it was, to be able to do that? It, it just doesn't fit the neighborhood. Um, that should have never been there, and I guess Tim could probably explain some of the comments that he made about it's, it's there legally, but it's not, I'll let you do that.
Conforming news right now, the mini storage units. It has a legal non-conforming unit. It's allowed to remain, however, cannot be expanded upon. Uh, if it is damaged, it would have to go back to the Board of Adjustment for replacement. And even at that point, um, there is question now because that mini storage unit is actually in the floodway. So they would not be able to reconstruct it without showing that they're not having an impact on the flood, floodway. Uh, so there are a number of issues with that building where it's at, uh, that it's grandfathered in, it's legally non-conforming, but continuation of it uh, or potential for expansion of that use over there is probably not desirable.
So why was it denied? Why did the zoning commission deny it?
Uh, one, it's residential use all the way around, it's residentially zoned. Even though there is some commercial use, I believe Frank the Sailor owns a building to the south, used to be uh, Cook's electrical shop. Uh, but everything else really around it is residential, and so commercial is a much higher density. Once you rezonate to commercial, anything that's allowed in that commercial use, it would be allowed in that lot, so it did not make sense in that neighborhood for that to be so commercial. Makes sense.
How many is that?
Um, what was it? It was fifty-four by one fifteen.
Ooh, that is cool.
It's, for the neighborhood, I'd be questioning if it's fifty-five. Um, all the rest of them in that neighborhood are sixty-six point seven by one fifteen, that one could be, but if it did come from anything, he owns the other portion of it with the storage unit, so it's not. They're all plotting out. We spent years ago the money to have that whole block, you know, surveyed out. That was my pitch. Build a house. It's a normal lot, build a house.
We need houses.
Yeah.
Okay, is there any other comments? Did we hear anything from public or anybody? I know there was.
We had no written comments.
Nobody write comments, okay.
Other than the comments that wasn't, that were made at the public hearing, planning zoning.
All right. With that then, I will close the public hearing at five sixteen. And before you, is ordinance one amending the official zoning map of the city of Manchester for finally East Delaware Street. What would the council like to? Is it five point, yeah, it's five point two ordinance. One.
And he's done.
Uh, I'm gonna go with planning and zoning. It is a very small lot. I'm gonna go with no.
I'm gonna ask Jim a question if I may. Would it be better for us to just vote it down as opposed to not vote at all?
If you vote it down, then it has to go back, it's still pending, I suppose you could always bring it back up with the front plans, so voting it down would would require, we would end it today.
We would end it today.
The way I had planning zoning permission handled is they did make a motion to approve it. A second, so motion passed, and then they all voted against it, voted it down. So that procedure was to, you, you pass a positive uh, event, and then you can vote against your motion.
So we have a motion that is voted on and recorded.
Okay, so I will move that we vote on ordinance zero, zero.
Zero, one. Mm-hmm. All right, ordinance one, I have a motion by Mary Ann. Do I hear a second? A second. Second by Tanya? Any other questions? Okay, Mary Ann?
No.
Tanya?
Yeah.
Dean?
No.
Linda?
No.
Bill?
No.
All righty.
Thank you, Jim.
All right, next, public hearing, it's five eighteen, we're opening the public hearing on the request of R and J Reynolds LLC to rezonate parcel. Uh, there's a parcel on South Third Street from Ag to I two heavy industrial district. Public hearing is now open. Is anybody having anything you wanna speak to? And is this another one that was at planning of zone?
This was another one that was considered a planning zone.
Mm-hmm. And this is Ray and Jane Phillips then.
Correct. Um, if I can.
Yeah, go right ahead.
Uh, this parcel is currently a pasture that was purchased. Uh, surrounding this parcel contiguous to it, on the south side is I two. There's commercial on the north side. The west side of this parcel has railroad tracks and I two on the west side of it. Uh, South Third Street is bordering on east side, and there's Ag to east of that. Uh, because this is existing I two, it would be not spot zoning, it'd just be continuation of the I two zoning district. Uh, we did not have anyone opposed to the rezoning request. Uh, and it does make sense to turn this or amend the zoning warrants for.
And P and Z recommended.
It's for approval.
No comments? And we had nothing written either? Okay. So at five nineteen, I'm going to close the public hearing. And before you is ordinance two amending the official zoning map of the city of Manchester for South Third Street. Do I have a motion to?
It would be the first consideration.
For the first consideration, okay.
I'll make a motion for the first consideration of rezoning of South Third Street as presented by two.
Okay.
One second.
All right, okay. Motion in a second. Any other questions or comments? All right, Bill?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Tanya?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
All right. Next, we have a public hearing on the proposed contract documents and estimated cost for the Shelley Park renovation redevelopment project. I opened the public hearing at five twenty this afternoon.
That would.
Oh, no, they don't have, did I skip something? Five four?
I think you're okay.
No, I'm right.
You ordered for it.
I did five four. Yep.
Public hearing.
All right, yeah. It was the first consideration. That was what was different there. That had me thrown to. Okay. So, public hearing on the Shelley Park, and do you wanna bring us up to speed on this, Tim, please?
Sure, uh, we get, this is a redevelopment of Shelley Park, uh, we'd be pulling out the retaining walls, taking down the shelter, uh, there's a tree down there that I know is rotted out that does need to come down. Uh, would be making some open area access to that place, uh, providing idiot compliant ramps trail through there. Um, basically, it's just a redevelopment of Shelley Park. We did receive a COVID grant to help us cover that cost. The grant is a seventy-five, twenty-five percent match. Uh, we received up to three thousand dollars. We did get bids received and we'll go through those later, but the next gen item, really, this is just kind of a redevelopment of the park down there. The retaining walls are shot and you remove, we're done. Uh, the shelter, we've done what we can to maintain the gazebo, we wanna preserve what we can. Um, but there is limitations by keeping the gazebo there. That changes what our elevations can be to tie in with the ADA compliant ramps.
Any comments or anything from public? Hearing none at five twenty-two, I'm going to close the public hearing. Before you, we have resolution twelve approving and confirming plan specifications from a contract and estimate for the cost for the Shelley Park renovation and redevelopment project. Do I have a motion for that?
I have some questions first.
Oh.
There is only, there will not be a way to get from the street level down for like wheelchairs.
There will be.
There will be. Oh, there will be, yeah.
Yeah, it'll be.
Yeah.
There will be.
Yeah. I never understood that many conversations ever was.
Yeah, that's what the widened trail does up there. That, that loops, loops around there, and the reason it has such big arcing curves is in order for us to keep it below five percent grade. So we don't have to consider a ramp. If it's over five percent, we would have to consider a ramp and then have to have hand, handrails on the side of it.
Okay.
So that's why the trail length is as long as it is instead of more direct route.
So the handicap would come in from the south.
We come in from the south, you know, it's not the most direct access, but it's the only way for us to.
Can I stand for a second? Are you talking right here?
Yeah. Did you say right there, and you just followed it all the way up to?
We could probably have maybe Sam speak about how that handicap, it's gotta be less than five percent correct on a.
Running slope correct. If you have a ramp that's eight percent, you need to have a landing every so often, but running slope in your, if you're five percent, you're fine.
It's not always ramp, if it's five percent or less, it's a sidewalk.
Okay.
Okay, that's good. And I have one more question. What's going off the gazebo? I ask you that all the time.
Yeah. Uh, actually, I wanna sit down and talk with you. If you have someone that you know that can give you some, give us some advice on what to do with that. We've talked to two different people, and they've looked at it, and they weren't interested in trying to figure out how to move it. Uh, if you know somebody that has some ideas, I'd be happy to hear it. A couple of the challenges are with the roof on that. Uh, how strong and starting strength to the size of, it'd be twenty feet wide, getting it positioned on a trailer. So if you have someone that has some ideas, I'd be happy to do that, so we can put some specs together.
Okay.
And again, we wanna find out what's it cost to move it as opposed to starting over because, uh, we talked about relocating that up to five hundred Franklin Street, you know, on this. Um, we really don't need the base because we're gonna have a concrete slab for it to sit on, so we can have handicap accessibility into it. So all we need is the post and the roof line.
Okay, so you're still looking for somebody to actually move it?
Yeah, we are still looking for somebody.
Okay, I will ask the person that know, that moves stuff like that, see if he's.
If you have some ideas, if they have some ideas, we're really excited to see what we can do.
Okay. I'll do that. I'll plug it all.
Thank you, Linda.
Okay, any other questions?
What's our timeline for this with?
Quick.
Start right away if I can?
Once we get, uh, stuff approved tonight, we'll send the contracts out to them, get those contracts back and approved. Um, city staff will do a lot of demolition uh, cuz it helped us see our costs down, so we can we can tear things apart pretty easy. Um, so really, we still have to have this, majority is done by May twenty-ninth. Uh, guidelines now are eighty-seven funding has to be expended by May twenty-ninth with remaining twenty percent done by July twentieth. So I think we have a timeframe that we can work with them.
So forgive me, but I don't know that we got a motion or a second yet, did we? Okay, so do I hear a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to, uh, accept the, oh, brew it.
Resolution twelve.
Yep, prove, yeah. Motion to approve resolution twelve.
Final second.
Okay. Any further questions before I put it to the bug? Okay.
Let's see, I have a question. Oh, um, whatever the grant does not cover, the rest will come out of the white water.
We, we have a reserve in the white water plant at this time of day.
Okay. Thank you. All right. That's all right now, okay. All right, Bill?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
Tanya?
Yes.
Bill? Or, excuse me, Dean? Sorry, and Linda?
Yes.
Thank you, all right. Oh goodness, okay. Next before you is, uh, resolution thirteen, and that's awarding the contract for the Shelley Park renovation and redevelopment project, and I believe that we have that for um, to Eastern Iowa Escavating. And do you wanna talk about that, Tim?
Yeah, we had quite a few bids on this, I think eight of them, uh, with the two little bids being within two thousand dollars of each other. Uh, we're really happy with the bids are forty-seven thousand dollars under the engineer's estimate, which will allow us to, for getting a shelter down there. Um, so we have done fully working on that right now, uh, trying to see what we do, whether it's a fabric shelter uh, or doing some more permit. So we've got some ideas or options there. Uh, Eastern Iowa, uh, excavating has done a great job for the city of Manchester. They helped us with the pickleball courts. They've done a number of street projects for us as well, so I'm very confident with contractors, they have the means, the abilities to complete this project.
Any questions? If that'll entertain a motion for resolution thirteen.
I move for the approval of orders thirteen. I'm excited about this. I mean, but between Riverfront Park and Shelley Park, it could use quite a bit by the community, by people that are visiting the community, and you can definitely tell it needs some, some refurbishing.
Do I hear a second?
One second.
Any further comments, the questions? All right, Tanya?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
All right. Uh, we have the water department's spare well controls for wells five, seven, eight. Item six point one, what is this regular agenda then?
Uh, basically, we're looking for authorization to go out and purchase spare radio controls for these wells. Uh, with the system we have now, uh, we used to be able to just have one review that we could swap out, program it for the different locations we put it into. However, with the change in the wells and the controls that we have now, uh, the programming is a lot more complicated. You gotta just change them out, inter-swapping between different wells. So we have physical backups for those different sites. And so what this does is allows staff to go ahead and proceed with that purchase.
Do I have a motion to approve the estimate from line tech?
Someone.
Any further questions? Mary Ann?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Tanya?
Yes.
And Bill?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. Engineering update. Who wants to go first? I'll let you go first.
All right, so we met last week Wednesday, met on site with utilities, um, for the East Ministry Project. Lion Energy and their engineers on site, Black Hill Energy, um, Windstream, we're up there from Windstream, Chad with the city. Um, nobody from Media Camp was there. It's one that we wish would have been there. Uh, nobody with Central Link was there, but I think we have one handhold to be moved. I correspondence with them. Tentatively looking at having a public meeting late March, early April, um, specifically for um, to update the property owners about all the utility construction that's gonna happen kind of this summer before the project. Probably have a project specific public meeting um, this fall or later, later this summer. Um, but once we kind of hear more from utilities on where their designs at and what they want to do, try to get that coordinated to update the public about that. One bigger ticket item is gonna be a lion, um, like I say, kind of last year, just taking down poles, put new street lights up. And if any property owners want to move their services underground or not, um, I'll kind of help them with that during the project. And it will be at a reduced cost and they should be able to speak about what, you know, what the cost could be. Um, if you just want to go underground without the project, they, they charge an additional fee, but that will be waived. So if anybody would want to do it, that would be the time just to eliminate as many overhead lines as possible. But so we'll hopefully have more at that time. Hopefully we get a lot of utilities that can attend, answer questions. But that's pretty much all I have unless you guys have any questions for me. Thanks.
David, Sam, Jason?
Um, the only thing that the uh, except the public hearing for the parking lot, but we'll be taking bids for that on March eighth, Wednesday, March eighth. For the parking lot project. Um, and again, we're doing that as a basement concrete and asphalt alternate just to make sure you've got all of our bases kind of covered as far as where the market is right now, as far as contractors and suppliers of materials. It's really the only thing current we've got right now until weather kind of straightens up for finishing a couple of things later this spring. Any questions?
Look like a thank you, Jason. Okay, Jim?
I have nothing to say.
Okay, Tim?
Again, Aaron and I are still working on the budget, trying to get things finalized. Uh, we have not communicated yet whether or not uh, next Monday night will be necessary. So we'll get back with you later this week as to whether or not we can wrap things up with the budget. Uh, we were swamped in last week, maybe this week, so uh, hopefully we can get things finalized. I know at the legislative level, it does not look like they're gonna do a one-time backfill for the reduction in the rollback they're moving forward with. Uh, the House is supposed to take up the vote sometime this week on that. If they get taken up, it goes back to the governor's office then for approval, uh, when she signs it. Then I'll go back to the county auditor's office and have them go back through and recalculate everything, get us new numbers. So we're still looking at the end of the month before we see the numbers. Uh, that's the reason we're following the process we're following right now, because even though they indicated our budgets are not due until April thirtieth. Uh, just because of the timelines to publish and meet those requirements, uh, we're gonna keep looking for.
Okay, Aaron?
Nothing.
Bill?
Nothing.
Mary Ann?
Nothing.
Tanya?
Nothing at this time.
Dean?
Okay.
Linda?
I have something. I had some citizens ask, how much have we paid for attorney fees for the airport so far? I probably won't have that number right.
I don't have that number right in my hands, but I can get that for you.
Yeah, you let me know.
Now, uh, are you looking for a specific or a general?
Just a general.
Okay. And do you want what we received as far as funding from the FAA to offset those costs? The cities share, how much the FAA is paid?
Exactly.
Okay.
Is that it? Okay, all right. And I don't have anything else, so uh, entertain a motion to adjourn. Oh, okay, Linda's motion, but a second. Tanya's a second, and we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Have a good one.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, absolutely.
Where is, uh, where is, where is the location located at?
Where is the what?
Viers.
Viers.
It is north of town about a mile and three quarters.
Near Honey Creek?
On Honey Creek Road.
Did you have any other questions?
No.
No?
No.
Okay, let's have government class.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.